No, that's all right.
Go ahead, I don't care. We can share it. No big deal.
Ready? Okay, let's go ahead and get started this evening with the City Council Special Study Session of Monday, September 29th, 2014. Can we have the roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Drossit.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
Mayor Viera.
Here. This evening, we have one discussion item, that is the discussion of the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget options. Mr. Wells, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening is the follow-up of two previous items that we've had, previous sessions that we've had discussing this. The first one was the June 9th, 2014 approval of the current budget for fiscal year 1415, followed by the study session of July 28th, where we talked about the parameters for the options that I'll present this evening. So just an overview of what we'll cover this evening. The review of the fiscal year 1314, so the details of where our finances stand as of today. Then we'll get into the current budget with the updated estimates. Budget projections as we kind of look forward in the next couple of years. The options that you asked to have studied, the one-year option, the recommended option, and then the next steps. And again, if you have any questions, I move through the slides, feel free to interrupt me at any time and ask questions right there. So fiscal year 1314. So we are, we're mostly finished with all of the accounting. What is still left is the audit of the fiscal year 1314. That will happen in October and that'll make some minor changes. But for the most part, you can see where we came in, in the actual line there, pretty darn close to balanced in terms of revenue versus expenditure. A couple of things to caution about that revenue, you can see it's about $600,000, just a little under $600,000 more than we had budgeted, but a good portion of that was from one-time funds, PTAF being $290,000 of that. Another portion of that was, was a budgeted number, but the CFD was basically a fund balance. It was about $300,000 more than what we'll get this year. So between those two numbers, in essence, explains or puts a little parameter on us being balanced because it wasn't necessarily something we could count on going forward. But needless to say, the revenues did come in better than, than we had expected, primarily again due to those one-time sources, but a little bit better numbers in sales tax and a few other parameters. So that's where it leaves us at the end of the year. Again, subject to the audit, which, you know, may have some changes depending on what the auditor finds in the review of our books. And so here's how that kind of shakes out into this year, so it's where we ended up last year. These are updated numbers for the current budget, so that's the budget year approved on 6/9 and the amendments that have happened since then. The two amendments are, one, the SRO funding from the school district, as well as the carryover resolution that was done. So those two actions reflect in those numbers for both revenue and expenses. So in essence, didn't really change the overall number, you know, there were some minor changes, but in essence, the, the difference, the imbalance, $1.8 million, just a little over 10% of our general fund expenditures for fiscal year 1415.
Could you, sorry, could you go back two slides?
Yep.
So the actual is closer to 16, 3, 3.6?
For that fiscal year, you know, taking out those two one-time things, which is pretty much right where we had budgeted.
And we're projecting, the next slide, 17.1. What percentage is that?
About 4.6% from year-over-year revenue, taking out the one-time money.
Okay. And how comfortable do we feel about 4.1?
We're pretty comfortable with that number. I'll show you as we get into the forecast, we're forecasting 4% going forward, but, you know, a few things in this year that we feel a little more comfortable than we do going further out, just because we're a little closer based on what the state numbers are for sales tax and other, other revenue sources. We feel pretty comfortable with that number, but it is still a projection. I think, you know, Sheila's numbers in the past, on the revenue side for sure, expenditure as well, have been pretty darn accurate. So I have a pretty high degree of accuracy with, with their forecast from the Finance Department.
Okay.
Any other questions on that?
Well, I'm looking, go.
Go ahead, yep.
I'm looking at.
I'm looking at this thing and you got like, the first one, propose use, use of fund balance, and then you got impremises, to me, that's a negative.
Yes, that is a negative number.
And then at the, at the bottom, you're, you're going, you're adding it all back in? Or is that just the total of the negatives?
That's just the total of the negatives, yeah. Probably could have parentheses there just to be consistent.
All right.
Right, we good on that slide? You can always come back if there's more questions. So again, minimum reserve level, per council policy, up to this year, the minimum level, council had directed 25% of expenditures under the fiscal year 1415. And again, it's relative to the expenditure, so, you know, this number will change a little bit depending on the expenditure. As the expenditure goes up, you know, that, that percentage will be adjusted. So you can see where we, we ended based on those unaudited numbers with a fund balance, a little over 28%. If we didn't have those one-time monies, it would have been 24.6%, you know, right at 25, which is what we had expected, forecast with the use of the fund balance for fiscal year 1415, it'll put us at 4.3 million or 25%. Per year direction on 7/28, you are willing to drop that down to 20%. And so that's the number that we use for the analysis of the options we go forward. So future projections, so this was included in the documentation that I provided for you on Friday. Basically, this is the projection if we're looking forward with no changes to the current budget, with a couple of key factors here. One, revenue projection going forward of 4%. So that's in that line item there, revenues 4% for fiscal years 1516 going forward. And then on the expenditure line, salaries and benefits, the 2% in fiscal year 1516, reflective of the existing MOUs that were executed recently. So what this includes is 3% salary concessions returned to the employees in fiscal year 1415, and then the 2% in 1516. And the assumption was that 5%, the remaining 5% will be returned in fiscal year 1617. So that's the, in essence, the base, is what would, this year's budget was prepared on before any council direction. So you can kind of see where those numbers, on the basis of those projections, where that would have us, you know, fiscal year 1718. Obviously, the further we get out, you know, the less confidence we have in those numbers. The closer we are, the more confidence we have. Further we get away, the more those numbers start to get a little, little squirrely.
I got a question, Toby, so just go back to here. So you're saying that the, the 3%, then the 2%, and then now the 5%, which would make it 10% whole?
Correct, correct. So in, in this, like I said, this projection was going into this budget year in June. What our assumption was, is that the 5% to, to give the, all the concessions back would happen in the third year. That was before any, any direction from council interfered. So again, the, the key assumption is that overall 4% increase. Couple of things to, we'll, we'll get into how this, this breaks down. The expense projection, relatively flat overall, and that's somewhat unrealistic because of what we've experienced with the retirement costs and workers' comp, those tend to go up every year. We just don't have any way of really estimating those because the numbers are all over. It's not like there's a trend that says, oh, worker's comp goes up by 2% a year and, you know, those retirement costs go up by 2%. We, we don't have a good number there, so for, for purposes, that's kind of where any uncertainty we have on the revenue is somewhat made up, or offset by the uncertainty on the expenditure side. The employee expenses, you know, is based on what's in the executed MOUs, so that's what's, what's built in on that side. Again, for round numbers, you know, 1%, approximately $175,000. So I showed these back in June, just to kind of help get, get kind of the, the sensitivity of our revenue projections. You can see how our revenue breaks down in the different components. You know, property tax is a pretty small percentage overall, only 10%. So as we get into kind of showing how that breaks down, you can see, assuming a 4% projection, we'll probably get 5% of sales tax. The state's, the state is estimating 5.5% for this year, but that's only a quarter of our overall revenue. So if one component's up 5% or 6%, other components, if they're only at 4%, you can see how that kind of balances out. So again, these graphs are similar to what I, the same graphs that I had shown back in June, but just, it helps to get an idea of the sensitivity again to our, our revenue projections. You can see with our sales tax numbers, and again, this benefits as Measure H as well. You can see the peak prior to the current year was back in '06, '07, and we've already, you know, somewhat hit that level and we're, we're growing, which, in a positive trend. It's not growing a lot, but it is in a positive trend. You can see from the, kind of the low point there in 2009, 2010. So overall, good sign on the sales tax front. The motor vehicle in Lou, when the county did, or, sorry, when the state ended that program and did a swap, they tied it to property tax, so you can kind of see how the lag with the property taxes here in the valley, especially the impact that we have, how that has taken a while to get back, plus they changed the formula. So the combination of those two means that revenue's going to take us a while to get back. So you can look at where we're at forecasted for this year compared to the peak. You know, that's a million dollars off there. Not likely to come back very quickly with the lag we see in the property tax. And you can see kind of the same shape there with the property tax. Again, property tax peaked '07, '08, you know, in this case, you know, the difference between the peak and where we're at is, you know, four or $500,000 significant, obviously, but it's coming back relatively slowly. Again, we talked about with the property tax, the lag between the valuation, the county does the evaluation in January, sets down a property tax bill in July, it gets paid in December and April of the following year. So there's a pretty significant lag to when we actually receive those property tax numbers. And that's reflective pretty much anywhere in the state, but we're particularly hit hard here relative to the percentage that we get property tax back. It's not a, not a big portion of the overall dollars what we get back. Any questions on those three? Again, that's kind of big portions of the pie, and so it kind of tells you the, the overall sensitivity of our revenue projections. So the one-year option, I won't spend much time on this because, again, in my opinion, this is really not a viable option just based on the impacts that it has primarily to our public safety departments, because that's really what's left to cut. So in essence, what we did is we took that $1.8 million deficit or imbalance and plugged that all into the current fiscal year 1415, and it would all go back at that year, and you could see what happens. In order to get that balance, what's in red would be for this fiscal year, in order to keep that 20% minimum reserve, $425,000 would have to come out of the budget to make it hit the 20%. So rough number, about four positions in the current year, or a combination of positions with some operational savings. This year is really not the bad year, it's just next year where it really impacts you, which is 1516, where you'd look at that service reduction of a million dollars. So what, two major thing that that does, the million dollars then drops you below the threshold for Measure H. You're not able to spend the Measure H dollars. Those 15 positions in Measure H would then have to be laid off. So you put the combination of those two numbers together, and you're looking at plus-minus 20 positions, and some operational changes as well, in order to be viable. Kind of document that here with what I just said. You know, it, it's not really a one-year option because it still takes several years to implement that significant change. Year two is where it really hits the hardest, and it's, but it still continues into year three, and those impacts on Measure H are, are pretty devastating to the overall operation of the city. And again, not a viable option of what that means to the overall city. That operation would be, like I said, devastating. Any questions before I move on?
Could you use just a little bit of the, you know, I know this is going to sound bad, but the reserves?
Well, that's, we're taking the reserves, that's, this is taking the reserves down to 20%.
But if you went to 17% at $170,000 per, per 1%, that's going to put you close to the 407,000.
For the one year, but it, your, next year, you still have the problem.
Then you'd be in trouble with Measure H.
Yes.
Okay.
So the recommended option is, is in essence, a blend of a two and a three-year option. It really is, at the end of the day, a three-year option, but what we're recommending, you can kind of see the, the numbers, the restoration of the step increases, kind of starting from, we'll talk about that in a second. So showing a portion of the step increases, a portion of the salary concessions, and I'll explain how that works here in a second, with really no other changes in the current fiscal year, so that's 1415. And then as we move into next year, there would be a service reduction that would need to be either with some operational changes of $230,000, and then the third-year operational changes or layoffs of $490,000 to, to keep that 20% threshold. Obviously, 1%, $170,000, there's some room there. So the, the recommendation, and we'll kind of go one by one. First one is the unfreezing of the step increases. So since the, really before the salary concessions were put in place, the step, steps have been frozen at step C. So if any employee, you know, gets to the step C, they're frozen at that point in time. If they were above it, then they were frozen at that step that they were. So the recommendation here is to unfreeze the steps. So if someone was due a step, a normal evaluation, their annual performance date, after July 1 of 2014, then they would be eligible pending a satisfactory evaluation to move to the next step, just one step, one per time, with, with your action. So you, this would require council action at the next meeting if you're so inclined to, to move this direction. So I'll give you a couple of examples. If an employee, so if this were approved tonight, the next action, you'd take formal action on October 13th, the next pay period, anybody that was eligible would then start to see that step increase. So if somebody was, say they had an August 15th was their annual date for their evaluation, they had a positive evaluation, it was recommended they approve, go from step C to step D, then on that first pay period following the October action, they would be moved to that next step. It wouldn't change in the evaluation dates, and then next year, August of 2015, then they'd be eligible for the next step. If somebody's evaluation was, say, November 1st, when that evaluation was completed, when they got a satisfactory, then he would be eligible for the step increase at that point in time. So what that does is allows, in essence, cash flow, the step increases over time with no retroactivity. We're not going backwards at all, we're just going backwards to the fiscal year in terms of the eligibility of when someone would be eligible. Any questions on that?
Got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Looking at one-year option, beginning budgetary balance, 3.65. Recommended option, budgetary balance, 4.029. Why, why is there like $400,000 difference in budgetary balance?
Because it's a carryover based on what you're spending. So if you look at the bottom, the ending budgetary balance there, because that's your total expenditures compared to the year one option, you spent a lot more. You spent the 229, the 381, the 489, offset by the 425, that's the.
So what you're doing, basically, I'm, if I look at this, you're leaving out Measure H in the recommend, the recommended option. Give, I mean, it's pretty close to leaving out Measure H.
Measure H is in fiscal year 1516. I'm sorry, 1617, the third year, Measure H is, is being balanced in the third year.
Right.
It's not, that's, primary difference is you're cash flowing both the step increases and the return of the salary concessions. You're cash flowing those two items in year one. Year two, they're fully implemented, and then in year three, the Measure H comes into play.
So what do you do in Measure H 1516?
In this current option, it would stay status quo. The $500,000 would be included in the general fund offset. There would not be any change to that other than 1617. So on the step increase, kind of coming back to that, another option, if it was easier to swallow, would be to just say, January 1 of 15 would be the effective date, that would be, might be a little easier to swallow. Again, my recommendation, we're talking about fiscal year 1415, it should be tied to fiscal year 1415 for the, for the change in step increase. So in terms of the return of the concessions, as I indicated, as of right now, there's 3%. It was in the current fiscal year, for the most part, we still have one group that's, that is at impasse, and 2% next year. The idea here, and again, it would be subject to negotiation, so I don't want to get into too much detail, but the idea would, additional 5% would be subject to negotiation to be effective. January 1, or as we kind of talked about it after I wrote this up, the first pay period after January 1, just to help our payroll folks out a little bit, January 1 being a holiday and in the middle of a pay period, that first pay period would be like January 4th, so. And that's most of the language we use in the MOUs is the first pay period. So the idea would be between now and January 1, would give us enough time to meet with you, the council, to get your direction and close session, exactly parameters of the return of those concessions, be able to meet with each of the groups, get, get the MOUs all tied up and back to council for approval, and have an effective date after January. Again, that helps the cash flow, as well as make sure we get everything done in time and we're not, you know, implementing it piecemeal with different groups. We think that's the easiest to implement and gives us enough time to get there by having meetings with you, as well as meeting with each of the groups. So just kind of going through the rest of the items here, item three there, we currently have a vacant position in the Police Department for a high-tech crime position. The recommendation is to keep that position frozen, is approximately $110,000 savings in the current fiscal year. The idea would be freeze it for this year, and it would be analyzed as part of the budget for next year as to whether that would be continued in the future. Per year direction on the July 28th meeting, hire the IT analyst in, in the current year, again, January, be consistent with the return of the concessions. And we would utilize budget savings from existing IT projects, so there would, in essence, not be a general fund hit to the hiring in that position, and also being halfway through the fiscal year, we'd be able to offset with the existing projects. And then we would budget next year, fiscal year 1516, for the infrastructure to be included with the lease financing. That number is about $15,000 to $20,000 per year is the estimate currently. We'll be bringing an item to you later this year, probably November, to discuss the Datapath Consultant Report that was done, that indicated what the cost would be for implementing those, those projects. Again, one of the keys to this working is, you know, proactively managing the existing budget. You know, and that is, you know, from the departments down, making sure that they're managing the departments as best they can. And when vacancies do occur, looking at each of those very closely, determine whether, operationally, we can live without that position for a period of time, and freezing those positions as appropriate. Item six, the recommendation would be to continue the funding of the Economic Development Redevelopment Manager until the end of the successor agency funds. Currently, it's expected that will happen June 30th of 2015, but there are some movements in terms of how that might happen based on that funding, so it could last a little longer than that. With the loan that was just approved, it's likely that could extend. So the idea is we, we use those funds as long as we have them, and then when those funds go away, the full-time position would be eliminated. We think the appropriate kind of transition would be a part-time person that was focused just on economic development, not on the redevelopment, because that would be, in essence, gone away. And then as, as finances improve over time, then that position would move from part-time to full-time. You know, hopefully, and probably year two or three, not likely next year, but hopefully the following year. Again, minimize the use of Measure H funds, review and revise the Measure H expenditure plan, given ourselves a little bit of time to do that by the end of next year, so 12/31/2015, and get the Oversight Committee's review, and have that complete offset removal, the 498,000, call it 500,000, have that completed for the budget of fiscal year 1617. And the one item that we didn't fully cover on July 28th would be the Community Center, give a little more time to complete a new five-year plan for that implementation, again, to happen in fiscal year 1617. So those are the, those are the recommendations, in essence, eight primary recommendations. If you were ready to move forward on those items, the next steps in terms of the salary concessions would be to close, schedule the closed session with the council, to set those parameters, and then we would set the meetings up with each of the groups to go have the negotiations, get that all completed and wrapped up, bring back MOUs to council for approval. And then with my recommendation, have those salary concessions returned, starting in January of 2015. We would, we would return, based on year direction, on the October 13th meeting, with any budget amendments necessary to carry out the plan, and then we would continue to provide you with updates on a quarterly basis. Been our standard practice, doing quarterly updates.
Okay. Are there any questions?
How much, how much would pulling back on police specialized units, similar to what Modesto did, would help offset our budget as far as overtime and, and?
Well, in essence, already did that with the Street Crimes Unit, taking that unit down and putting our folks on patrol. We've already realized that, and we're, as of, you know, we're pretty close to the three-month threshold. As of today, looking at the numbers where we are, budget year-to-date for fiscal year 1415, we're at about 20% expenditures, and, you know, everything hasn't hit this month because it's very the end of the month, but we should be at around 25%, so we're already under budget on that, and we're seeing the savings in our Police Department overtime as a result of the Street Crime Unit being able to be covering those patrol shifts. So there's not much left to do in terms of specialty units to take down from the Police Department in terms of savings. So we've already taken those steps.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a couple. First of all, you know, the employees have gone, and this is, this is really good, this is easy to read and appreciate that. You know, the employee's gone four-plus years, I don't know how many it's been exactly, no steps, no raises. You know, and again, I know we talked about a 20% reserve level, you know, and when I sit here and look at this, it's going to be 24% to 2015, 2016? And then that's when they'd get 3% of the 2%? We already gave them 2, and they'd get 3?
I'm recommending, the recommendation is they've already got 3, and they would get 5 in January. And then there would be 2% remaining for their existing MOUs in the next fiscal year.
Okay.
In essence, the total would be 8% in fiscal year 1415. There, obviously, there's a gap in there, but 8% in, in fiscal year 1415, and then the remaining 2% in 1516 per their existing MOUs.
Right. You know, and, and again, I, I didn't know if maybe we could do a 1 or 2% right now. I'm just saying in regards to, you know, what we have in the reserves, not to go past, because I think we talked about 17 or 18% at one point in time. And then one thing that I didn't see on here, and I, I probably the one that wanted to do it, was in regards to the enterprise funds. You know, we have the miscellaneous groups and the first-line supervisor, there's not a lot of money that's being pulled out of there.
This, this gives that all back. I mean, they're, it's all consistent, any, this is across the board.
Right.
So all that's shown here is the general fund impact.
Right.
But it goes across the board to all groups equally.
So in 2016, 2017 is when you'd say they'd have the full 10%?
No, they would have, at the beginning of 1516, they would have their full 10% back.
They'd have the full 10%.
Yeah.
Basically, in, how many months is that, eight, four months?
From today? Yeah, in essence, nine months.
Three months. That would be.
Three months, you'd have 8%. Six months after that, and so nine months, you'd have the full 10%.
I, I'm just thinking in regards to if we have, have the money right now, because it's enterprise money, why couldn't it happen right now?
Well, it's negotiations, we can't, and as crazy as it sounds, we can't give the money back without going through negotiations.
Well, I don't, are you talking about the additional 2% for fiscal year?
Yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, but, well, I'm saying however these, this plays itself out to get 10% whole, to establish the, the, the free steps, which I, I agree with in regards to what, what you said there, Toby.
So in essence, what you, what you're asking is you would like to move the 2% in 1516 into this current year. So in January, they'd be at 10%.
They'd, they'd be at 10%.
So in essence, you know, that's another $280,000 would move forward. You'd drop that number down to probably right around the 20% for this year, but it would, I mean, it means next year, you just have more cuts next year. So it's, it's a cash flow issue, the money just moves one way or the other. If you move it forward, it just means there's more cuts next year. In essence, that's why I did the cash flow the way we did in that January 1, to try and make sure we can get there without having to make, you know, huge cuts with any organization, based on the best information we have today. The more you do in this year, the more difficult it makes next year.
And, and then the 498, the Measure H, what is it that we're going to be taking that money out of Measure H and not using it anymore?
Correct.
Correct.
It's Measure H offset is what we've been categorizing, that is some police overtime, police position, and then the fire overtime is all being paid for out of, as a Measure H currently, so we'll be returning that back to Measure H.
And then it's going to be $490,000 in service level reduction, so you're talking layoffs?
Layoffs or operational changes. So general theme, that'd be five positions. We'd probably try to split the difference there, try to get to, you know, with operations, change half of that, and if that's, probably two or three positions. But that's, you know, two years down the road, and I, I have a hard time making layoff decisions that are two years down the road based on projections. You make those decisions when you get closer and you have better numbers.
And then at 498, we have to do that, or is that?
No, no, absolutely not. That's, I mean, it's, it's approved, it's an approved expenditure, you don't have to do it in that particular year, you can make that decision. You know, what we're trying to do right now, for example, in the Police Department, you know, they have a Measure H overtime offset of $75,000, and so they're not going to spend, they're going to spend their other overtime first and hit that last, and the goal is to not hit that this year. And so, I mean, it's not shown and reflected there, but those are operational things that we'll do to manage and try to, in essence, wean ourselves off of that help from Measure H overtime, so that it doesn't all hit at one time. If we can do that over a course of a couple of years within our existing budget, it makes that blow a lot easier to, to absorb when we get to that. it makes that blow a lot easier to, to absorb when we get to that, that next year.
All right, thanks.
You have a question? Okay, at this point, I'll go ahead and open it up for the public to comment on. If anyone would like to. If not, then I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council for further discussion and direction.
I have a question.
Okay, well, before I do that, why don't I go ahead and just see, if, if there's none, I will go ahead and, I guess, it's not really a public hearing, Mike, it's a study session, but?
Yeah, it's not a public hearing, but it's a study session and it's a public meeting, so.
Okay.
It would be appropriate to entertain any comments.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll still leave, you know, it open for anyone who might want to, to bring up a topic. Again, this is a study session, not one of our normal formal meetings. So if someone does want to speak, you know, just, I'll give you another opportunity at the end. So Councilmember Rhino?
The, the recommended option for unfreezing the steps would be basically right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so as soon as the council take action, we'd bring, bring a resolution back on October thirteenth to formally take that action, unfreeze it, delineate, you know, how this will work so that it's, it's really clear. So that would come back on October thirteenth and we would move forward with anybody who had an evaluation between July one and that current date, we'd take care of those. And it's not a big number, I don't know exactly the number, I haven't looked that up. It's not a big number of employees that would be in that group. And then going forward, anybody that has an evaluation, they would be do, it's do a step, they would get one step per time.
And then the additional five percent would be in January. Now, the two percent that they've already negotiated, which is in fiscal year fifteen, sixteen?
That's correct.
And that would be July first of sixteen?
Of fifteen.
Of fifteen. Okay.
So if I follow this right, you already gave them three percent in fourteen, fifteen, correct?
Yep.
And we have two more percent going in fifteen, sixteen.
Correct.
But you're suggesting to give them an additional five percent in fifteen, sixteen?
Fourteen, fifteen. January of fourteen, fifteen.
So, so from the three percent, we're going to drop, we're going to raise that up to eight percent come January first?
Correct.
That's what your recommendation is? Okay? But I also thought that we had discussed, when this budget came out earlier, have tried to quit deficit spending and give Measure H back their money.
That was the one-year plan. If you're trying to do it all in one, that's, that's the one-year option.
So I mean, it's a difficult situation here for us, you know, what we're looking at. Because we, we, we had talked about, you know, quit deficit spending, quit using the Measure H money for things that really wasn't entitled for and we've had a lot of people sit here and, and say we weren't, we were using it wrong and everything like that. Now we're going to continue to do it for an additional year, okay? Because now my, my other, my other question is, we give them three, we have them three percent, two percent, and then in sixteen, seventeen, we give them the five percent.
That was the original plan. Prior to your direction on June ninth, that was the idea. But your direction on June ninth was to give the concessions back and make the changes that are necessary. Obviously, from my role as a city manager, I'm trying to minimize the impacts of that direction as best I can. And that's the recommendation I put forward, is what I feel is the best direction for the city to, to balance those two things that you're looking for, minimize the use of deficit spending. Obviously, you know, I keep using the analogy of it is still raining. I mean, the, the rain's lightening up, it's a light sprinkle now and we're starting to get better, but we're getting better very, very slowly. So the use of the reserve, that's what it's there for. I mean, it's, it's the rainy day fund. I mean, the council has done a very good job of managing it and holding tight to a twenty-five percent. This is the opportunity to dip into that a little bit further, but you're not being careless either. I mean, you're being very measured and very calculated in the way you're doing it, if you were to follow this and it would allow, you know, to kind of transition out of that smoothly rather than making abrupt changes. You know, the abrupt changes are really what, you know, quite honestly, when we went through layoffs, it was before my time here, but we're just now, you know, four or five years after those layoffs, getting to the point where people are past that pain that it created within the organization. I mean, it leaves a deep, deep wound within the organization of, of getting past that. So to, to go through that again, when we're just getting to a point where we're starting to heal, is something I'm trying to avoid at all costs.
Well, and my, my thing is, is I'm sitting there looking at this thing and then say, let's say we go with three and two and five and sixteen, seventeen, but we go ahead and implement step increases as your recommendation was, as, as they go.
That's the, that's a policy decision. Again, my recommendation on the step increases, right now, folks who are at a step C, I believe there's twelve. I don't know which individuals, I just know from a count, there's twelve at step C and there's fifteen at step D. You know, and some of those are going to be enterprise funds, some are going to be exclusively enterprise, some are going to be half enterprise, you know, so that's kind of a mix all across the board. So it's not a huge number and what it does mentally for the organization is it removes a mental cap. You know, so we're, we're trying to retain our employees and we're trying to give back the concessions. Right now, that idea that, that I have no movement is something that gets people looking, it's, I mean, somebody that leave the organization, they, they find any number of reasons and it's a very personal decision. But from my perspective of doing what we can to make sure that we try to keep our employees, this is a very simple one that cash flows pretty easily, to try and give people the opportunity that, hey, there's not a cap on my ability to stay here and it's getting better. So, and for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, it's a pretty easy way to do that.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, you know, like I said though, I, I say we just, you know, we go ahead and implement the step increases, you know? And then, I mean, then we go three and two and then five at sixteen, seventeen, but yet we, we implement the step increases.
Okay. Councilmember Rhino?
Well, I was one that originally wanted to try and balance in one year. And then after I saw the impact, I knew that we couldn't do that, we couldn't afford to lose twenty employees and we couldn't afford to not be able to expend Measure H like we wanted to. I think that we need to unfreeze the steps, as Toby suggested, because as a former employee, I know how I would feel if I had been here for a number of years and I was stuck at step C. Next to me was someone who was doing the exact same job. They were stepped out at E because they had been here long enough. I'm doing the very same thing as they are, but for four years I've been stuck at step C. That honestly would suck. And I think that they need to get those step increases back. As far, okay. And as far as the additional five percent, I think we need to give it to them now as well. And the two percent in July of fifteen, I'm not sure if we were to go ahead and give that all back to them now, what actually is the impact?
It's about two hundred and eighty thousand, plus minus. It's a difference in the, the line between, or I guess two fifty, between the twelve-five and the twelve-seven in the expenditure line, that's that difference of the two percent.
So if we did that, are we still going to be at twenty percent?
We would be at twenty percent for this year, it just would mean some changes for next year.
Which is lower than I wanted, but I believe all of you were okay with that. And we've kind of made that policy decision. So I think we need to do, we need to give, make them hold now, I really believe that, because I think it's been too long. And like Toby said, when we get to fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, we're going to see exactly what we have going on and what kind of decisions we need to make then. That's the way I feel.
Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, great, great job here that you put together. I know this has been difficult and I know this is the only thing on your plate, but just want to compliment you, all of your staff on what they did here. And, you know, I would agree with, with Councilman Rhino and Councilman Drossit. I think it's time, you know, I like the plan, I know we can't do it all, obviously, right? But I think giving back the ten percent full, I don't know, I guess the question would be, what's that do to the MOU?
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons.
Because I know the two percent is in the next year. I mean, I'm glad to hear we're going to give five, you know, make eight by January, that's great. But what would that do to the MOU as far as moving it?
We were, we were going off the idea that with the existing MOUs that are executed, it was a three and a two and with a re-opener, you know, for salaries. So in essence, what we were going to do is move, the re-opener idea was for next year, right? In essence, would be just moving that re-opener up and just focus on just that portion of it. The hope was that it would minimize the efforts of negotiations and make it simpler. I don't think the groups would have much of a problem if we're wanting to move the two percent forward. But just for simplification purposes and again, some cash flow, you know, to be able to say, you know, it's, it's three percent, then five percent, then two percent, you know, in essence, every six months, they're getting a, a raise in essence, getting some back, is a better way to put it. That if anybody's got a step increase, that, that gets factored in as well. So it was that combination of factors of, of why we chose, you know, this, this direction. But it definitely could do that. It might just make the negotiations a little bit longer, but I wouldn't think it'd be that much, that much more complicated.
Well, I'm, I'm good with it either way. I mean, I'd like to give it all back right now, if we could. You know, if it's, you know, we have, we have what, two and a half percent now that we could mess with if we wanted to go ahead and do that extra two percent? So, you know, for me, it's either way for me. I'll go with the majority here, but, but I certainly want to see it back. I think it's time, these employees have been without for four years and you know what? I see things getting better, it's getting better for me, I can say that now, right? I couldn't say it four years ago, but it is. And I think it's time for, really, just to, to give back to the people that stuck with us and stayed here and, and moved forward and hopefully will stick with us and stay here. And hopefully next time, when the MOUs come back around, negotiations come, that we won't be negotiating from a negative, we'll be negotiating for something positive moving forward, so.
Councilmember Drossit?
You know, we have a lot of different union groups in here and people that work for the city. I'd kind of like to, and again, just here, and I know maybe they don't want to, what, what they think about this. I mean, this is your guys' thing here. This is your money, this is, you know, were they excited, did, did they help do any of this stuff? Or is this the first time anybody's seen this?
This is the first time they've seen this proposal. We, we tried to keep it under wraps as much as possible, just for the presentation this evening to give you the first crack at it. I, I think I can, I can't speak for all employees, but I think it's pretty simple. If you want to give the two percent back now, no one's going to argue with that. If it takes a little more from negotiation, that's a pretty, pretty straightforward idea that I think every employee would say, yeah. Question between January and July of next year, yeah, I'll take it in January, thank you very much. Yeah, that's a pretty easy one.
So if I'm hearing everyone, are, are we saying that by giving the additional two percent now, that we're going to utilize reserves to cover that and we're not going to look for other ways? Because obviously, Mr. Wells had his nuclear option, which I don't think we could go. As Councilmember Rhino mentioned, you know, twenty staff members, I mean, that's, that's just, that's ludicrous. I, I couldn't support anything like that, but, but how are we going to make up the, the additional move forward?
Well, with, within the current budget, we can do it and still say within the twenty percent by changing that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus minus, it really just comes into next year. If you'd like to see some budget offsets to get there, you know, what's, what's not factored into there is the hundred and ten thousand dollars from the, the frozen position in the police department. So in essence, that offsets step increases, you can look at it that way. So you're only looking at the one ninety-one, just call it two hundred plus two fifty, so it's four fifty. We probably wouldn't be able to make all this year within operational changes, but, you know, I think we could probably get, you know, maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars out of it without having to do layoffs. So we could come back with those recommended changes. Or if you, you know, we're going to be within a twenty percent, we could just move forward. My recommendation would be to leave it alone and know what your target is. And our goal would be to try to hit that, you know, stay basically within the existing budget that we have, knowing that we're probably going to be a little challenged to get there by the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. Now I'll ask you the fifty thousand dollar question. Can you live with this and, and operate?
Of course.
This is a good answer, but I had to ask it anyway.
Again, I put my recommendation, what I think is the best in terms of moving the organization forward, that's, that's easiest to implement and makes, you know, the most economic sense balancing all the, I mean, there's, there's three different balances here, right? That we're trying to find the best spot in the middle. And, and the recommendation I put forward is what I would consider somewhat of the sweet spot. But moving it a little bit further, further is not going to change it hugely. It just will make next year's budget a little more challenging, but it's, it's part of the game.
Okay, so is that the direction we want or?
One other question. So, so then what we'll do is move that re-opener up instead of it being, help me with this, because we're not going to have another re-opener in fifteen, sixteen typically.
Exactly, yeah, so the idea, and obviously, we would meet with you in closed session and nail down each of these parameters without, you know, tipping our hand too, too much. But we've pretty much already done that, so the negotiations are pretty, be pretty straightforward. But at the same time, we, we would meet in closed session, get those details nailed down before we went back and know exactly what direction you're giving staff as we meet with the negotiators and get that all ironed out.
Okay, thank you.
I would say though, that, and again, this is just on one of five, that we could take the reserves down to, it's going to go down to about eighteen point four percent. And I know that we've had dialogue in regards to, so we don't have layoffs to try to get us, you know?
For the, for this year, you wouldn't have to. You don't have to do anything in fiscal year fourteen, fifteen. That decision would be next year, as we get to the budget of what you're comfortable with. You know, in terms of making that, moving that number forward, it's going to make next year's a little more challenging. That, you wouldn't have to make it for this year, because we would be within that even with moving that forward. It's next year that, that gets challenging.
So I, I know the answer to this, there's no layoffs right now.
Correct.
Good.
Just the, just the one phrase position.
I would agree with that and there's no sense in addressing the reserves until we know. On the positive, hopefully, we're, we're, have higher revenues. But if we don't and our four percent, four point two or three percent was three point five or three point oh, we may have a bigger, bigger deficit and so let's, let's address that later. Councilmember Klein?
I can, I can agree with moving forward with Toby's recommendations and with the consensus of the, of the council. You know, with, with the step increases come January, re-openers.
Any other comments? All right, I'll give anyone in the audience one last chance to speak, if they'd like. Okay. Well, I think we're all in agreement. Do you have the direction that you need to bring it back to us?
So we will come back next week with primarily, the only thing we'll be coming back next week will just be the step changes. So we'll come back for the budget amendment for that. We will get started on putting the parameters together for a closed session. I know Councilmember Lane is out for the next meeting, so we'll probably target the closed meeting for the council on October twenty-seventh and then start scheduling meetings with the groups for November, obviously trying to get that done before the holiday season and try and get that all nailed down. So we will move forward, try to get this in place and ready to go for, for January.
Okay. And I'd like to echo the comments of Councilmember Lane. I appreciate all the hard work and everything that you, you went through with staff to, to get to this point. I appreciate that, so thank you and look forward to seeing that in the upcoming council meetings. Thank you. All right, at this point, we will go ahead and adjourn to our next regular scheduled council meeting, which is actually Monday evening at seven PM. Thank you. Is it the thirteenth?